9:00 AM, I'd like to officially open the Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council for the 16th of November. First of all, I'll do an acknowledgement of country. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkadoon and Injilangi people, traditional custodians on the land in which we meet today. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We also extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Just a reminder, ladies and gentlemen, that the recording of the council meeting... Please note that this Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. And I'd like to welcome Julie from the Church of Christ... Oh, sorry, the Isa Community Church this morning to say a prayer for the council. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Good morning, councillors. This is very loud. Let's pray this morning. Lord, I just thank you for this wonderful city of Mount Isa. Lord, I thank you for the people who are here, who love this city and who serve this city in so many different ways. Lord, I thank you for the leaders of this city, and I pray that particularly during this meeting this morning, that you'll give us understanding of those things that are being discussed this morning, that we will be in unity, Lord God. We pray for wisdom as different matters are discussed. Lord, I thank you for the various community groups in this city that serve the people in so many different ways, whether it be sport or caring. So many different people who just plant themselves in this city and serve the people. And, Lord, I just thank you. Lord, we thank you that you are with us in this place, and I just pray for this council meeting this morning. I thank you for every single person in this place. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Julie. You're welcome to stay, of course, for the rest of the meeting. Understand, of course, if you have to leave. Moving on to section three, apologies and leave the participants. I believe that all councillors are present this morning, except for the mayor, who will be joining us shortly.
I'd just like to, through the chair, put in an apology. If the meeting does go beyond 11:30, I would have to leave the meeting at 11:30 for a prior engagement.
Thank you very much, councillor Coglan. So noted. Item four is public participation. Do we have a member of the public who would like to speak with the council today? No? All right, so we'll move on to the scheduled presentations for the community grants. We'll take first of all the grant recipients, the Mount Isa Camp Craft Association. Is Lisa Finlay available? Come forward, please, Lisa. We'll come forward up here, get a photo, and...
She doesn't need the microphone.
Sorry, the past, future, past, current, and hopefully future support of the Mount Isa Camp Craft. This funding will go towards putting a dishwasher into our kitchen, which will hopefully finish our kitchen facilities off and hopefully make our facilities more available to the wider community.
Next grant recipient is the Football Queensland, Mount Isa Soccer, Callum Sorensen. And this funding is for purchase of security cameras for the Mount Isa Soccer grounds.
So, yeah, on behalf of myself and Football Queensland, just like to say thank you to the Mount Isa City Council for their support. This is going to go a long way to some security cameras. We've actually had a lot of theft this year, a few thousand dollars' worth of a lawnmower. We've actually had our fields poisoned recently as well. So we've had a lot going on out there. So this is going to go a long way to hopefully deterring some thieves. So thank you very much.
All right, third, we've got the Life Flight Foundation, Billy McCready. This is for a water rescue mannequin. Funding is for the purchase of a water rescue training mannequin for the Life Flight Mount Isa.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Life Flight, the council, we'd like to thank you very much for this grant. Exciting times for Life Flight. The next year or so with the hub, medical hub being built next year. The rescue training dummy is twofold. It allows us to do some winch training safely, just using a dummy rather than a live person. It can go in the water, and we can also use it for stretcher winching as well. So we can winch somebody up without having to put anybody in the precarious position of training in a stretcher. So I'd like to thank you very much. Thank you.
And we've got the Mount Isa Rugby League. They're unable to attend today. Has this got a representative here today? No rep from Mount Isa? Okay. Mount Isa Rugby League is getting five and a half thousand dollars to refurbish the children's playground. Funding is for the installation of a softfall under the children's playground. Next one we've got is the Townview State School, PNC, Deanna Graham and Marisa Tred. Townview State School, PNC, going to get $4,697 for the purchase of a coffee, popcorn, and snow cone machines.
And just on behalf of the Townview PNC, we'd just like to thank the Mount Isa City Council. It's going to go towards, yeah, coffee machine, popcorn machine, and that for our discos, community events we do. We love helping out in the community. And, yeah, thanks very much.
The next one's the Isa Heat Swimming Club. They're unable to attend today. Isa Heat Swimming Club are getting $1,515 for the Mount Isa Heat Swimming Carnival. Funding is sponsorship for the Mount Isa Heat Swimming Carnival to be held in February 2023. Mount Isa School of Dance is getting a $1,837 grant for A Winter's Tale. And I'll ask you to explain the Winter's Tale. Congratulations.
I'd just like to thank you, the Mount Isa City Council, on behalf of the dance school for their ongoing support, both previously and this year. A Winter's Tale is our end-of-year concert. It's going to be next weekend, the 26th and 27th, Saturday evening, Sunday afternoon. If you don't have anything to do, come along. It's based on Frozen. The money we've received is to hire a projector from out of town that projects digital backdrops that are animated, so they move behind all the kids while they're dancing. Makes for a great show, so come along. Thank you.
Zonta Mount Isa, Cherry Brosman is a founding member. Zonta Mount Isa will be getting $5,000 from the Mount Isa City Council for the 2023 International Women's Day Dinner. Congratulations, Zonta.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much to the Mount Isa City Council for this grant. You've supported us very well in the past, and I think in turn we've tried to support the Mount Isa City Council in any events they've asked us to attend. But we wouldn't be able to do this as well without their help, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, Cherry. Isa Highlanders, they're unable to attend today, but they'll be getting $1,500 for the 2022 Highlander's Highland Dancing Competition and Outback Titles. The funding is to sponsor the 2022 Outback Titles to be held on the 12th of November, 2022. And the last one we have is Commerce North West, also unable to attend. Commerce North West will be getting $3,850 for the Northern Outback Business Awards. Funding is to sponsor 2022 Northern Outback Business Awards, held on the 5th of November. So congratulations to all of those grant recipients. We'll adjourn the meeting for now to get photos with the group. If you could all move forward... Sorry, there's one more.
Yeah, there's another question for the winners of the street parade.
Oh, wow. Okay, we've got prize winners here for the street parade. We've got Sunset State School. Could they come forward, please? Sunset State School have won $1,000 as a winner, as a prize winner, for the 2022 Mount Isa Street Parade Festival. Can we have a speaker?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Mount Isa City Council for their funding of $1,000. This will go towards our street parade for next year. Thank you.
So that was for the best themed entry, by the way. Thank you very much for putting that entry in. Next, we've got the best school entry, which is the Sunset State School. Sorry, I've got the long way around. Sorry. So it's the best community group entry, Mount Isa PCYC. Okay, we've got a nominated speaker here. Thank you very much.
Thank you to Mount Isa City Council for putting on a great street parade. We love getting involved every year. I'd like to personally like to thank Ms Fay for her efforts. And obviously, this year was around our Blue Edge program, so it's all about our young people. So the funding will be used for ongoing support for our youth programs and services, so thank you very much.
Sorry, we've got the Townsville... Sorry, Townview State School. Now, the Townview State School was the best themed entry, my mistake, and the best community entry... Sorry, the best school entry was the Sunset State School. So can we have the representatives from the Townview State School come forward, please? And congratulations on the best themed entry for the...
Thank you.
I'll get someone to have the speaker.
We'd just like to thank the Mount Isa City Council again. The kids love dressing up for the parade, doing a great job. They just adore it. And, yeah, this money will go towards next year's parade, so thank you.
Thank you very much to all those winners, and thank you for coming, attending, and participating. It's going to get better and better each year for the parade, the street parade, so festival. So I'm going to remove myself from the photo because there's not enough room. Could I have all those recipients of all the awards to come forward this morning, please? Yeah, just up in front of the... Just come around.
Oh, did you watch it live? Oh, good. They did so well. They're such smart kids, I don't... There was a lot of smart kids. Cherry, you might have to get at the front. Yeah, you might have to get at the front. No one's going to be able to see you. Get them all.
All right, we'll carry on with the meeting. We've got a presentation from the Etrea for the Youth Strategy, and the presenter is Patrick Norton, I believe. Thank you, Petra. Pardon me, Patrick. All the recipients of the awards this morning, you're welcome to stay if you want, but you also, if you want to leave now, you're happy to leave. So you can stay and participate in the meeting or... No problems.
Thanks, it is.
Sorry, I thought I had a captive audience there for a minute. Congratulations, all. All right, so we've got Patrick Norton on board, yes. Sorry, Patrick, apologies. Can you go ahead with the presentation, please? Yes? It's a thumbs up?
Is that a yes? Sorry? Yep? All right, I'll try and do that. Bear with me. My apologies, I don't seem to be able to share my screen. Petra, I'm not sure if Petra's there. Is the presentation available to be shared from that end? Yep, no, I can continue then, if you like, and it really was just some talking points that we had there in the presentation. So as I said, we appreciate the opportunity to introduce ourselves. I'd like to acknowledge Brian and Petra for their contributions so far as well. Been a great support to us. I'll also acknowledge that one of our directors, Matthew Lane, is in apology today. So Matthew's overseeing the strategy development, but he's had to attend a funeral this morning. And the intention of this conversation is really just to provide that update to you on where we're up to, what the next steps are, and what we'll try and avoid today is sort of forecasting any solutions as well. That's where we're up to. Just touch on, I suppose, a bit of the scope from the RFQ that came through, and really commend the RFQ that came through, that was put together. Firstly, the background that was provided as to the situation in Mount Isa. Really tried to highlight both the current situation and some of the challenges that are faced by young people in the region, but also the positive aspects that were in there. So the language that was used was around that resilient, creative, finding those positive role models, and really trying to generate a community-led strategy that provided some direction. So firstly, commend your organization for identifying those positives in the RFQ. Within the project, there is two high-level deliverables. So the first is that integrated youth strategy, which includes an overview of all the different services and programs that are currently being delivered, as well as those identified issues and challenges as well. So that's the first one. And the second one is a youth action group with a charter and a structure that's identified, so providing that voice from young people into council. So they're your two key sort of aspects of the deliverables of the project. And within the project, there's a range of sort of steps that we'll undertake to deliver that. Core is the consultation process, which includes the workshops that we're hosting next week, as well as some really targeted consultation with young people. So one of the key things within this is really trying to access the youth in the region and hear their stories, hear their challenges, the issues that they're facing, and what they want as well. So that's one of the key parts of the project. So when I get... I'll talk soon about what the engagement looks like next week, but what we're trying to do is allocate enough of our time to really listen and to be there and access different demographics of the youth cohort as well. We'll also provide some... We're also conducting some national benchmarking as well to understand what else is happening in terms of both youth strategies and youth charters and the voice to council as well. So what's the best practice, both nationally and internationally, and what's been working? And looking at comparable locations and communities as well. So that's sort of the overview of the program, is those two high-level deliverables, the strategy, and then the youth charter as well. Happy if I just charge on a little bit? Yep, great. So far, we've conducted a bit of that national benchmarking or national research as to what else is happening elsewhere. We've shared some of these documents with Brian and Petra to do that benchmarking snapshot of what else is happening at a state level in terms of the Queensland Youth Strategy, comparisons to Northern Territory, toolkits that are available. And we've also been able to identify some youth strategies that exist in other regional councils, and also providing some international examples as well of what else is being done to sort of broaden our thinking before we then narrow in on what the plan is. We've also then done some research into the youth charters that exist and what seems to work in other locations. Next week, we're there in Mount Isa, and that's Corinne Aiken and myself, and we'll be doing a range of different engagements. So the real... What we're trying to do there is really trying to understand the current situation. We're trying to connect with a lot of service providers as well to understand the services that are being delivered, because that's one of the core deliverables within the report, is that service mapping. We'll also try and connect with people as to what their ideas are and their vision for the future. And we'll also, I suppose, try and discuss with council as well how to make this, and with organizations, how to make this strategy something that's really tangible and practical for both council and other stakeholders, so it's not just a document that sits there on the shelf, that it's actually something that's quite actionable as well. So to do that, next week, we're there from Wednesday to Friday. On the Thursday, we're conducting a series of three different workshops. So there's three workshops that are being conducted on the Thursday at the Civic Centre. The first one is with youth service providers. So that's the example there is the organizations that have been invited are PCYC, the police, YPA, a range of different organizations have been invited to that one. The second workshop is with Indigenous and Torres Strait Islander Services. The third one is with the Education, Health, and Community Services. So that's your schools, your health department, and other community organizations have been invited there. So the Thursday will be predominantly the workshops. Then around that, we're also looking to engage directly with some of the key stakeholders. But really importantly, what we're trying to do is spend some time with young people to really understand what life looks like, what the current situation is, what works, what they see the future as, both in relation to the strategy and in relation to the youth charter, of what that can look like. So I'll give you an example there. We're connecting with... We've connected with the Flixie School. We've connected with multiple year levels at Spin FX College to engage with students there, Spin FX State College. And we've connected with John Doyle at Three Sons Fitness as well, to understand, to connect with some of the youth that attend there, and to connect with John here, his perceptions as well. So really trying to have a lot of those conversations with young people to hear what their priorities are. So from there, so from the engagements next week, the following steps, we will then go and collate a lot of the insights from there, and we'll put those together in something that brings a bit of a story. Following that, we'll come back to council and to yourselves as councillors to really involve you in that process as well. So there'll be... We're very keen to hear, have your contribution, but at the moment, we've got that scheduled in for after we've done the community consultation, to then come back to council with some insights and some thoughts, to get your contribution and to provide some direction as to what that looks like at that stage. Following that, in the first quarter of 2023, we hope to have the strategy and the youth charter completed. So our intention is to come back to you as councillors, that engagement in early 2023, so probably January, we'll come back to you with some of those insights that we've found from the community, with that national best practice benchmarking, and come back to you with some things and a little bit of direction that we can discuss to get your contribution and to get your input at that stage. Does that give a bit of a snapshot of the project and where it's heading?
Do we have any questions, councillors?
Just a question for Chair Patrick. As far as the stakeholder engagement goes, are there some organizations in Mount Isa off the top of your head that you can name today? As far as the stakeholder engagement goes, are there some organisations in Mount Isa off the top of your head that you can name today?
I'm sorry, I heard the stakeholder, I didn't hear the rest of the question, sorry.
The PCYC and a, and a few other organisations. There's a number of non-government organisations in town, I guess part of the overview of services will identify those. Are there any in particular besides the ones that you've already named today?
So apologies, still trying, is there a question regarding the, who we're consulting with from the stakeholders?
Yes, yes.
Yep, so we, we, we've worked with council and with a number of organisations to put together that list. We can share that list with you following as to who's been invited to each of those sessions. So to give an indication of numbers, the, the first session, which is the youth services, I think we have about fourteen people in fourteen organisations invited at this stage. The, the second workshop we have for the Indigenous Services, we've got four, four organisations invited to the second session. And the third workshop, I think we have seventeen different organisations invited as well. So if there's ones in particular that you think should be invited, please provide that information to Brian or Petra, and we can make sure that that's extended as well.
Thanks, Patrick. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick, and are you looking at like Girl Guides, Boys Brigade, and you know, like the 111 Air Force Cadets, that sort of thing, are you sort of engaging with that sort of level?
We haven't, we haven't had, had them on the stakeholder list, no. If that's something you think we should engage, that's definitely one that we can have a conversation with. And part of the conversation, while, we can have that while we're there next week, but we're also doing a range of phone conversations and offering other contributions for people to have their input as well. But no, they, the cadets hasn't been on the list that we've looked at as yet.
Yep, and, and the only reason I ask is because one of the overarching themes that I'm getting is that they're not, all these different organisations aren't getting the kids signed up, you know, so they're having a lot of trouble getting these, the numbers are dropping off, and I think since Covid. So that's, that's really, you know, I, I, I think some of these, we've got some of these great resources in place. So how do we get parents aware of them, get their kids signed up and make full use of them, you know? And I, I know some of the numbers are dropping from forty to sixteen and things like that, so, you know, it's real, it'd be great to sort of look at how we can support the organisations already out there.
Through the chair. Madam Mayor, if I can just advise that one of the objectives is to actually target the, all the sporting organisations and those recreational organisations as well. We didn't list them all because there are so many to invite them to the stakeholder list. However, we will be working with Atria to target those probably a little bit more indirectly, not face-to-face, but we'll be inviting them all to do like a survey and that sort of thing, so that we're getting that information back from all those organisations through the sporting groups and the Girl Guides and the, the Boys Brigades and all of those sort of organisations as well. So it's definitely on our list to target as well, but we just thought we couldn't have absolutely everybody in the meetings because it would be very difficult to, to have everyone along, but they certainly are part of the target audience as well.
Thank you, Petra.
Thank you.
Was there any other questions, councillors? councillor Coquelin, any questions? No? Alright, well thank you, Patrick, that was very comprehensive. And I had a, a chance to catch up with the Minister for Youth Justice, Leon Leonard, the other day, and I, I talked about the youth strategy you're developing, so she's really keen to see what comes of it, so. Yeah, I'm, as a community, I think it would be fantastic, so thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, and then I will just highlight that the community has been very responsive as well in our engagements. People are really passionate about it, and, and not just passionate about it, but willing to contribute, so that, that's great. So I appreciate your support and thank you again to Brian and Petra, and hopefully I get to meet a few of you next week.
Thank you, thank you, Petra, thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay, and before we go on to Charity of the Month, just like to thank, thank councillor Fortune for chairing the beginning of the meeting for me. Thank you, I was listening with on the, I was YouTubing it as we, I was coming into the council meeting, so I got to hear all the awards, that was fantastic. And I also have another award now, so it's Charity of the Month. And as a lot of people know or may not know, that every Friday councillors, ah sorry, not councillors, council staff come in and they, they dress in formally and they donate a gold coin donation. And then after a couple of months, they put that money to a charity. So this charity is, that they've selected is the National Breast Cancer Foundation. It's Australia's leading national body funding for breast cancer research, and money raised is entirely by the Australian public. Do we have anyone from breast cancer here? Yep.
I think because the staff have donated, that I think it might be appropriate for to get a picture of the staff in, or Petra's just left, so if Jane's well, just get a photo of the mayor.
Yeah, sure, and, yeah, that'd be great, and so their mission is, Breast Cancer Foundation's mission is to stop deaths from breast, breast cancer. And how? By identifying, funding and championing world-class research, research that will help detect tumours early, improve treatment outcomes and ultimately save lives. Two Australians are diagnosed with breast cancer every hour. Approximately twenty thousand Australians are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. One in seven women are diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime, and about one in six hundred men are diagnosed in their lifetime. And for those that don't know, we have the breast cancer truck that comes to Mount Isa usually around radio time, July, August. And yeah, so if you haven't had your breast cancer screening in a year or two, get, get to your GP and book an appointment because it's important, especially once you get over the fifty, that you get those regular screens. So I'm very proud of the council staff, they've raised $297.80, and this will go to the National Breast Cancer Foundation.
Thanks for the money.
Okay, that takes us now to item five, which is the confirmation of the previous minutes. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please? So councillor Tully would like to move the officer's recommendation that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty eighth of, sorry, the twenty sixth of October, 2022 be received and the recommendations therein adopted. Would someone like to second that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any comments on this one? All those in favour? That's carried, thank you. That then takes us to item number six, which is actions from the previous council meeting. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation that the council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meetings as of the eleventh of November, 2022? Can I get a moever, please? Thank you, councillor Tully, seconda?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray, any comments on this one? Alright, all those in favour? And that's carried. Okay. Declarations of conflict of interest, I now invite councillors to declare any conflicts of interest in the agenda items today.
None from myself.
No.
No.
No, thank you, and if you do become aware of a conflict, please speak up as, as you become aware. And that brings us to item seven, which is the Meryl Minnit. And I just want to acknowledge that Father Mick Lowcock was nominated for Queensland Senior Australian of the Year. And Mount Isa William Barton was nominated for Queensland Australian of the Year. And Father Mick Lowcock was unsuccessful. He got beaten by a, a man who has walked around Australia for ten years with a lawnmower and raised 1.5 million dollars for, for children who are victims of assault. So very worthy recipient. But William Barton was successful, and he has, he will now go on to Canberra to represent pretty much Mount Isa, his hometown, and himself for Australian of the Year on Australia Day 2023, which is very, which is fantastic, so really happy for him. And I just also want to acknowledge Dale Dixon, he's our interim CEO, and he's hit the ground running, been here for two weeks and has made an enormous difference already. So I just want to thank you for coming on board and looking forward to the next few months.
Thank you, it's a privilege.
And one of the things I'll just mention is Dale's feedback to me is, he, he's already very impressed with Mount Isa and really loves the city, so that's, I think that was great feedback. Okay, so we'll move on now to item nine.
Through the chair, are we moving second to Meryl Minnit?
I don't know, do we have to? Yeah, I, I think. Okay, so we have Neil reading of correspondence, which takes us to item ten, which is the ten point one, which is Governor's Annual Report for 2021, 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please, and you have to read it out?
Um yeah, I'd like to move that council resolves to adopt the annual, annual report for the period first of July, 2021, to thirty of June, 2022 for the Mount Isa City Council in accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act 2009 and associated regulations, and delegate authority to the chief executive officer in accordance with the Local Government Act 2009 to make minor administrative amendments and finalise all matters associated with publishing this report.
Thank you, councillor McCray, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully, any comments on this one?
Um yeah, I'd like to make comment, I think it's important we all go over that document with a fine-tooth comb. I've picked up a, a few own missions while I've been checking it out. So if everyone could get on, have a good look at that and pass those changes that they'd like to see on to the CEO, that would be perfect, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCray. And if there's no more comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried, thank you. This now takes us to item eleven point one, which is the finance overview report. And would someone like to, councillor Barwick, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Sorry councillor Barwick, you're still muted.
Such a not lovely thing to mute a councillor.
Sorry councillor Barwick, we still can't hear you. No, still can't hear you. I'll read the motion, you keep trying to get sound. So the officer's recommendation is that council receives and accepts the October 2022 financial overview report as presented. Deputy Mayor, do you want to put your hand up to say that you moved that motion? Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully. Any sound yet, deputy mayor? No, sorry, we can't hear you. Sorry, still can't hear you. It seems to be muted on your end, deputy. Yeah, so just click on, so, so councillor Barwick's saying you've got it muted. You can't unmute him, yourself?
No.
Yeah. Okay.
Try taking your headphones off, deputy.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, okay, there, we're, it's worked.
Must be something to do with the, I apologise, must be something to do with the headset, uh.
Okay, so we've, we're up to comments.
Yeah, sorry, thanks for moving that, madam mayor, I'm happy to make a few comments on the, has it been a second?
Yes.
Yep, okay, so the revenue is showing up for the, for the period due to rates being issued and the, also the reserve lease fees being issued as well, so that's looking quite healthy. I note there's an increase in the interest received due to the higher interest rates that we're receiving lately. So that's, that's a bit of a bonus for us. Parts of the revenue are showing down at the other income stream, and that's due mainly to the water dividend being budgeted for across the year. So that won't sort of take, take up until May 2023, so it will show as being down for that period of time. The recurring expenses, they're, they're holding quite well within budget, in my view, and are subject, you know, to review, of course, as we're aware in, in December, I think the first quarter budget review will be coming in the operations budget. I'll just, a couple of things I'll note, just at the outstanding rates, there's been a significant jump in the 181 to 365 days arrears, and I've mentioned that to Director Chalais. So it would appear that there's been some work done in the background on, on that, that jump. So it's just pushing out our, you know, our overdue rates quite considerably. And I'll also note that there's still not much reduction in the over 365 days rates arrears, which is, you know, it's an increasing, increasing problem for us as well. Anyway, thanks madam mayor, I'll hand back to you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments on this report? No, everyone happy? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to eleven point two, which is the Economic and Community Development Overview Report for October 2022. Councillor McCray, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the October 2022 Economic and Community Development Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Stretton, councillor McCray, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um yes, I would, we had Remembrance Day last week, that went off very well. I'd like to thank the mayor and councillor Fortune for representing us at that. Councillor Coquelin and I were able to sneak away from our work and get there, we were up the back there. So we, we were able to make it at the last minute, so that was a good thing. We've got Christmas carols coming up on Saturday, the third of December. We've got our Camberwell Community Christmas picnic coming up on the sixth of December. And then moving into next year, we've got Australia Day, our sign-on expo. Also keeping in mind that next year is going to be a big year for us with our hundred-year celebrations, with our first event kicking off on Mount Isa's birthday, the twenty-third of February. And that's it for me, thank you.
Any other comments on this one? Alright, all those in favour? And that's carried. Next, that brings us to eleven point three, which is Splashes Overview Report for October 2022. Councillor Coquelin, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the council receives and accepts the October 2022 Splashes Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, can I get a second for that?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you. Councillor Coquelin, would you like to speak on behalf of? Thank you. Councillor Coghlan, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
No, it's all good. I just would like to know through the chair, how far off are we with the diving blocks?
Through the chair, we're just going through the procurement process. It's been quite difficult getting suppliers in town to do the works, but we're still working through it. At this point, I don't have a time for you, but I'll take it on notice and get back to you in due course.
Okay, no other questions on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, this takes us to 11.4, which is Waste Management Overview Report for September and October for 2022. I'll hand you over to councillor Streton to move the motion.
Thank you, madam mayor. Recommendation there is council receives and accepts the September 2022 and October 2022 Waste Management Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that report?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on this one?
Yeah, just a few items there. In September, we saw JJ Richards take up the contract work of the waste management, pick up and that's seen to be working smoothly there. And I'd just like to thank all the staff that made it possible and smooth change up.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
So this through the chair was talk about.
Turn your mic around. There, there was some talk, I think at the last meeting or the last workshop regarding some people that were unhappy with some of the things. Was there any comms put out regarding why the issue was or where the issue was? Do we know?
Miscollection.
Yeah.
I think we're going to put out some comments basically saying that if you have any problems, you still contact council. We're still the first order call for any problems. And then, so I'm not sure, Lindsay, if we've done that yet. It was in the newsletter.
It was. Okay, thank you.
Could we just do a Facebook post on that as well? Because not everyone gets anything out. Thank you.
Thank you.
It, through the chair, it was noted that there, there was some teething issues that were expected and encountered, but have been resolved quickly. And we're focused on continuing to improve the waste services provided to the community of Mount Isa. I think that feedback will go a long way to settling the concerns that people in the community have about the transition. You know, every time something changes over, it's not going to be 100%. But we just like the community to know that we're striving to get the services in places that they expect.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And I think just getting that message out there that we're still the first point of call for any problems, because I think people weren't sure who to call. And that's what half their frustration was, we don't know who to contact. So it's still us for anyone out there. Okay, any, if there's nothing else, all those in favour? Okay, that takes us to 11.5, which is the Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report for September and October for 2022. Councillor Streton, would you like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yes, thank you, madam mayor. Councillor, recommendation there is council receives and accepts the September 2022 and October 2022 Environmental and Biosecurity Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, environmental services and biosecurity processed a total of 170 service requests, searches, inquiries and complaints between September and October. Inspections were conducted by environmental health officers at events over September and October, including the Rockpot Mine, local monthly markets. Also, personal appearance services inspections have begun and were run through till November. Mobile food businesses inspections have been conducted throughout September. And the Great Northern Cleanup was held on the 8th of October 2022. This event was run by Southern Gulf and sponsored by the Mount Isa City Council.
Thank you. And I believe they pulled out one tonne of rubbish off the Lakemundara Road, which was, you know, it's awful, but it's good we've got it out there. Any other comments on this one?
Through the chair, the, I just had a question on the energy efficiency strategy. I, I believe there's been technical visits conducted during October. And I'm just wondering if there's an additional report coming back to council to keep us updated on that strategy.
Through the chair, just confirming that stage one, which was the audit of several sites that are owned by council has been done. And there's some recommendations that have been made out of that report. So we're currently working through phase two, which is developing a strategy around energy efficiency and options for council investment going forward. So we'll get back to council with the report within the course of this financial year. We're targeting February at this point, February 2023.
Well, yeah, thanks very much.
Thank you, Chalaya. Thank you, deputy mayor. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. So this now takes us to 11.6, which is the Local Laws Overview Report for September and October 2022. And councillor Streton, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, thank you. Again, madam mayor, recommendation there is council receives and accepts September 2022 and October 2022 Local Laws Overview Report.
Thank you councillor Streton. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Councillor Streton, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, during those couple of months, September, October, the local rangers did some training on dangerous dogs. One of the biggest things I'd like, I have seen is the installation of air conditioning in the new pound structure was completed in September. So to make it a little ferry friends, a little bit more comfortable down there, which got a lot of way in the summer months out here.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, it'd be good to go down and have a look. I haven't, yeah, that might be something we can do as a group. Maybe we should be putting on a sausage scissor or something down there for the team. Putting you all on the spot there. All right, thank you. Any more comments? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that brings us to 11.7, which is the painting donation. Would anyone like to move the officer's recommendation? Or maybe councillor Streton? Oh, yep.
I'd like to move that council accepts a donation of a Roberto Lepetti still life painting for public display.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
Um, yeah, I would. I'd just like to thank the person donating this for their very generous donation. And I'm sure the community will enjoy looking at it. Mr John Riley, his name is. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Through the chair, just, just a little bit of the background there. Mr John Riley purchased the Roberto Lepetti painting in San Francisco in 1976 for $1,750 US. The painting is an 18 by 24 inch framed still life oil painting. And he'd like to donate to council for public display.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And it's such a wonderful generous donation. So a big thank you to John Riley.
Through the chair, I think this is a fantastic donation. It really is. And just to support, you know, the collection that council does have in the arts. I'm just thinking about the public display, particularly for locals. It might be well placed as a suggestion to put it in the library, particularly as the, you know, we go ahead with the university centre as well. That's probably the place where you get the most public traffic in our facilities. It would probably fit okay in the civic centre, you know, because of the performing arts nature of the, of the painting. But yeah, my, my view is anyway, the possibly library would be a good place.
Uh, thank you deputy mayor. It might be, there might be an in-house struggle for who gets what, gets the painting. Um, thank you for that. Any other comments? All right, all those in favour?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so that takes us to item number 12, which is Infrastructure Services Reports. And the first one's 12.1, which is Major Projects Overview Report. Councillor Tully, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Thank you, madam mayor. The recommendation is that council receives and accepts the October 2022 Major Projects Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Seconded, fortune.
Thank you. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this report?
Thank you. The family fun park, this, the, it's got state, state park. I think it's supposed to be skate park. The, the shade structure is, is awaiting lights. The, the, the structure's actually up, so that's all completed. I was down there the other day. The Centennial Place, the construction tender is closed. Recommendation will be presented at the November council meeting. Kitchen containers and toilet block tenders for this location is also being closed and being assessed for award. And that's so, so that's pretty important with the Centennial Place. So hopefully we can have that up and running for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And dare I ask, will it be open for the school holidays?
Through, madam acting mayor, as of yesterday, the understanding is that the skate park will be open for school holidays. And the balance of the park, we're looking at early in the new year. So that's.
Okay, that's great news.
The position.
Yeah, that's really good news. Any other questions there? All right, all those in favour?
Yes.
And that's carried. That brings us to item 12.2, which is Works and Operations Overview Report. Councillor Tully, would you like to move this motion?
Thank you once again that council receives and accepts the November 2022 Works and Overviews, Works and Operations Overview Report.
Thank you councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Streton. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you. During October and November, the completed R2R rehabilitation and ceiling works, we received and commissioned the 25 ton Volvo excavator, which the other week when I was out travelling, I saw the side of the road that it's out doing works, you know, in the bush crew. So that's gone straight into work. And that's, yeah, that's about it for, for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour?
Yes.
That's carried. So this takes us to item 12.3, which is your 2223 Capital First Quarter Budget Review. Deputy mayor, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, sure, madam mayor. Thanks. I'll move that council receives and adopts the September quarter review of the 202223 Capital Works Budget.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Uh, thanks, madam mayor. The, there's a range of changes there that are listed in the tables. I, I think it's all quite clear from the reading. There's been a number of projects that have been deferred for 1.4 million, just to make allowances for increases in, in other areas there. But there's no significant additions otherwise. It's just, just to meet the, the expenditure that we need to for those particular projects. And some of the other stuff under the water infrastructure is, is carryover funding. Just to continue with the program for the smart meters. And there's, there's been a deferred program for the animal management facility where the pump out and rising main reservoir and reservoir for refurbishment has been deferred. Uh, I think that's pretty much, um. Um, the Parkston Reserve, of course, shows the, the deferral of the Centennial Place budget into, into next year of 1.450 million. Uh, the environmental and regulatory programs. So the, that's a deferred amount there for 3.340 million for the materials recovery facility equipment, which is, I think, subject to another paper in the, in the agenda today. Um, and apart from that, there's a 500,000 that's been deferred due to the delay in the delivery of some fleet, which is fairly commonplace at the moment. So I'll hand back to you. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thank you. Thank you deputy mayor. Any other comments on this one or questions?
Yeah, I've just got one question there. I, I didn't pick up before. On the fleet management, we've got a decrease of 500,000 and then we have a deferred of 500,000. Is that the same or different? Please.
Who are we passing that back to?
All right. That's just a deferred 1.500,000.
Okay, yep.
And that's just reflects the fact that we went right through this. There's a lot of projects which are all worthwhile, but they kept a budget. It looked like we were trying to manage how to control all these things coming from. But as we tore it right down and said, let's say we're not going to do anything. Now let's rebuild it. So we then added back in all the things that obviously were already done, that were already started and definitely going to be delivered. And all the things that were confident were going to be finished. Anything that we couldn't sort of point out at the contract or something, so would definitely be finished. We said, we probably should defer it and we looked at it. We're back and come up with this number of things. So our plan was, while people sort of hoping, saying, yeah, look, we've got the orders in and it could come, it probably won't. So we said, whatever is there, we'll get them. My shoulder and my face.
Thank you. And Stephen, during the budget process, we didn't have any forecasts for the fleet management. And there's no rush on this, but I really would like to see the forecasts for the next, I don't know, is it five years or 10 years? So when, when it's ready.
I think it's, but you may not think. Yeah, because generally you know the hours of planning of every kind of life. So you can plan to make some choices in the fall, in terms of the ongoing project. It's pretty much a little bit of a mockery in a while. It's like the water that we're done with. It's not a bar for playing for a month, it's six months or five months, you can play for a month if you want something to do in the other fleet.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, we have a replacement policy that we haven't been sticking to the last probably 10 years. So we, we probably need to, yeah, good.
Yeah, and that goes with the forecast and it just has, gives you an idea of what the plan is going forward. Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Okay, all those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
Thank you. And that takes us to 12.4, which is the Centennial Place Construction. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Thank you, madam mayor. The recommendation is the council award contract 2022-76 to Ocar Constructions, proprietary limited for the sum of 3.894101, excluding GST for Centennial Place site construction work. And that council increased the budget for Centennial Place to 5.3 to be delivered, to be delivered over two years as detail. Thank you.
Can I get a second for that motion? That was very close. It was a tie. McCrae, thank you. Councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Um, no, so I think everyone's looking forward for this project to start. It, it's certainly exciting and it's probably been a bit delayed with the old Harvey Norman site taking forever to be demolished. And then, you know, it was always an eyesore, I thought, for trouble was going through when it was. But now it's cleaned up and hopefully in the next, you know, few, few months, we can have a place where everyone can enjoy.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other comments on this one?
Um, yes, I had one. Just the second part of that motion, it says delivered over two years. That's just to do with the budget. That's just to do with the budget and paying for it over two different financial years? It's not being staged at all? Is that right? Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because we did say that we didn't want it staged project. We want it delivered all at the same time. So thank you for clarifying.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So the proposal about a eight-month construction period, and we can re-listen a lot of the time of getting on site, the material, which in fact could be towards the end of January, which is what happens in November, could be out of the two months from now.
Okay. Yep.
So through the chair, we've got that down to be opened to coincide with my next year as far as the 100-year celebrations. So are you saying we probably need to push our expectations back?
If it gets down to a lot of materials delivering in, so if we're all of the best intention and contract is that, and the payment front parts, if we want us to see what they equipment's come in November, so if they get it actually by the end of November, it's possible that they could have had it finished before Christmas, if they're not confident, which is why I'm asking. So it's really, really difficult.
Thank you. 2023 would be fantastic though.
Definitely. The opportunity is to, you know, to drive the materials as well, the opportunity is to fast track. So it's a good opportunity to do this. And it's a very nice opportunity.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks Stephen.
Through the chair, can I just ask, is there a planned opening date for this, or like, is there a proposed date for the ribbon cutting at the moment?
Through the chair, deputy mayor, as I was just saying, it was planned to be open to coincide with my next, 2023.
Okay, okay, thanks. Sorry, I missed that bit.
And then also the family fun park, 23rd of February for Mount Isa's birthday, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, no, I was talking about the Centennial Place, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, May, but looks like maybe not. Pushed back to another event later in the year perhaps.
Okay, thank you.
It would be good if it could be, Centennial Place could be finished by rodeo. That would be really, really good. But I guess it's all fingers and toes crossed at the moment, hey?
Well, we appear to have... You can't, you can't, but you can finish it, the materials that are there. They don't think like, you can expect like, pulp, 12-wine, this is just not enough pulp. It's a fairly minor sort of material, but you've got a plan, always around the back of the company.
Yeah, yeah. It's difficult times at the moment, for sure. Thank you Stephen. All right, is no more questions? All those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
Okay, so that continuing on really is 12.5, it's Centennial Place Kitchen Cap and Container Supply. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council awards contract 2022-74 to boxmate shipping containers for the sum of $307,246, excluding GST, for the supply of modified specialist containers for Centennial Place.
Can I get a second?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
I think the shipping containers are going to be an excellent addition for the community to use. If we're going to have markets, having Ed Street type feel, and I think all community groups will get benefit of them, from them and appreciate them in due course.
Thank you councillor McCrae. Any other comments on this one? Okay, all those in favour?
Yes.
councillor Tully?
Sorry.
And that's carried. All right, that'll take us now to 12.6, which is the review and amendment of the DWQ MP. Would someone like to remove the officer's recommendation please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, oh yes. The recommendation is the council note the need to amend the current drinking water quality management plan and endorse the submission of the draft revised plan to the water supply regulator.
Thank you councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. councillor Tully, would you like to comment on this one?
Thank you. The Water Supply Safety and Reliability Act 2008 requires that the review of the drinking water quality management plan be undertaken every two years. Council last reviewed its drinking water quality management plan in May 2020, and this review and other issues led directly to the audit carried out by the water supply regulator in August 2020, and a number of subsequent non-compliances. And these reviewed to ensure that, the review is designed to ensure that the drinking water quality management plan is accurate and up to date, appropriate to managing risks for the supply, and functioning and working well. So yeah, I think that's something that Stephen's taken on board and done a very good job. So yeah, I thank him and congratulate him. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, through the chair, councillor, probably I'd like a bit more time to have a look through the, and hold this approval over till the next ordinary meeting. I'd like to have a look through the drinking water quality management plan a little more before I vote on it. I've got an update of the last night or this morning, and I just wanted to go through that and make sure I'm over that before I actually vote on it. So I second the motion to open up the debate on it, and I won't be voting for the recommendations.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Stephen, did you just want to give us an overview? Would you both have a microphone, just so that... Sorry.
Yes, thank you. The, it says there about the frequency of reviews, and that it's been reviewed, it was actually reviewed last year as well as a consequence of that audit, and that's when we adopted that 104-point plan and added that in. As you're aware, the regulator was happy with that, and now the need to report further on that has gone, so any remaining actions are being rolled into the amendment. We did it entirely internally, previously we'd used consultants, but the trouble with that is that we sometimes talk about plans being living plans, it clearly wasn't, and nobody had looked at it since the consultant finished it, so we'd been ticking boxes. We did it internally, including the revision, and apologize that the draft, which still hasn't got the appendices attached, only went out this morning. I did mention that it would be late, a couple of weeks ago, when we discussed it at the workshop. So there'd be opportunity, the intention is that we'll clean it up, another draft to go out early next week, try and finish it off by the end of next week. So happy to get any feedback from councillors, not trying to sort of go around or exclude councillors, a bit of a timing issue. We did actually, we have got an extension on it, but they want it by the 2nd of December, so that's now cutting it a little bit fine, and it's before the next council meeting. Would have been ideal to take it to a December meeting and have a good look at it, or even have a full presentation at a workshop. So the, the plan itself really represents, as well as we can, what we are actually doing. I think the old plan didn't represent that. There was a lot of high-level statements about the marvellous things we're doing, but even as noted by the regulator when they came up here earlier last year, we weren't following the plan. The reason we weren't following the plan was because it wasn't the thing to be followed, it wasn't very, very good, but we do actually have to amend it to say what it is we're doing. Not an easy-to-revised front. I moved a lot of stuff in the body of the plan to appendices and put some words in there to say, kind of like, we reserve the right to amend the appendices from time to time to keep the plan live, and that's accepted by the regulator. But even things like the emergency contact were embedded in the body of the plan, so they still said that the CEO was Sharon and all that sort of stuff. You've got to do a revision of the plan just to update that, and that's ridiculous. So that's all moved to appendancy. Now, so you can update phone numbers at a moment's notice, which help you implement the plan, but don't actually change the intent of the plan. So a lot of administrative revisions, adding in things like THM management plans, which we didn't have, updating the standard operating procedures and that sort of thing. And of course, if you've seen those blue posts, what we call the Net Kelly sampling points around town, that's probably the biggest thing. We were stuck and are still stuck with sampling from some very poorly chosen sampling points, which are not representative of the water around the rest of the town. So we've got about 30 points instead of the fixed seven points, and we'll be changing points from time to time so we get a better view of what's happening across the town. And we've been giving ourselves that opportunity in the revised plan.
Through the chair, is it critical that it needs to be voted on today, or can we have it out of session? I'd really like to hear about that latest draft and ask if it...
Sorry, through the chair, I'm pretty happy with the risk assessment team that's been involved with this, so yeah, I can't see why we can't vote on it.
It does say it's a draft too, it's not saying it's a final product, you know, so it is saying it's a...
Yeah, it was intended to give council the opportunity to at least have a look at what will be 90% of the planning, the appendices aren't there, as I said, the appendices are mostly lists of sampling sites and lists of phone numbers and things like that, that, you know, don't really impact the plan. But as far as that goes, I'm not sure whether council actually even has to formally approve it, but given our history in the last sort of two years with water quality and the regulator's expectations, I wanted council to be aware of it. So from that point of view, it could be out of session, I could still submit it, and then if there was some major amendment, we could do another amendment sort of immediately afterwards, which would be fairly easy, a bit unusual, but it's mostly administrative from this point on. Really the changes that I wanted council to be aware of, and to have the opportunity to have a look at least as to what's in there before we send it off, and you feel that you're trapped into anything. It doesn't actually have a big shopping list or anything like that attached to it that will commit you to millions of dollars of expenditure. There is a risk improvement plan in one of the appendices, that's the things that came out of the audit from late last year, the regular five-year audit. They haven't been costed, and we actually haven't committed to doing any of those, but we've noted them in the plan that they think we will have to address in a few years.
Thank you Stephen. Any other questions on this one or comments? All right, let's vote. All those in favour? Against? Would you like to vote for them? If you're going to revoke councillor Fortune's vote against, and deputy, you were voting for?
Yes, thanks.
Oh, sorry, I missed it. Thank you. All right then, that's carried. Okay, so that takes us to 12.7, which is a retrospective approval for a variation to a contract, 2022-72T Rivers Lee Road. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recommendation is that council confirm the actions undertaken by the officers to continue with the construction preparation and sealing of 362 metres, square metres by the contractor whilst on site as a variation to the original contract for the value of $273,525 and 25 cents excluding GST.
Thank you councillor Tully. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The works have been undertaken by Durac Proprietary Limited, who was the principal contractor on site. This enabled a cost saving of up to 200,000 excluding GST for mobilisation if this variation was undertaken as a standalone project. Having the unsealed area in the middle of a sealed 6K section would have contributed to safety issues and future seal degradation. So yeah, it was just completed while they were on the job, which is, I mean, understandable. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any questions on this one or comments?
I've got a quick, having travelled out to Rivers Lee recently, I know this area was selected because they said there's a risk of washout, but it's just, it's a long drive on a dirt road, and then you just get like to a small sealed section that lasts a couple of minutes, and then you're on dirt again. It's just, I don't know, I couldn't sort of, I know we'd been doing work out there, and I guess it maybe is more dangerous than the rest of the road, but yeah, it just seems strange to me.
Okay, we...
Through the chair, wasn't that explained to us in the workshop, that the part that they did was a part that keeps getting washed out and all that? So they build it up so that they don't have to keep going out and doing it?
Yeah.
I think that's what it was.
Did you want more clarity councillor?
No, no, like, obviously people have more expertise than I do, but in my head, I was thinking there was a long stretch of Fitchman Road, but when you travel on it, it is not the case.
Yeah. No, thank you. Okay, if there's no more comments, all those in favour? Deputy Mayor? Yep, and that's carried.
Yes.
And that takes us to item 13, which is general business, which we have nil. And then that moves us into confidential, so times 10:26am, I will adjourn this meeting for 10 minutes, and then we will reopen in confidential. Thank you everybody. Thank you, everybody.
I'd like to move the motion that council moves out of closed council into open council for 14, which is the consideration of confidential business items. 14.1, the material recovery facility. 14.2, the minutes of the audit and risk committee meeting held on 20th of October 2022. And 14.3, funding application for the MRF confidential.
Moved. Just sorry, through the chair. Mine must be around the other way around. Because 14.1 is the audit.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It is, it's written the other way on here, but it is that.
So what are we moving?
So, let me just get it up again. So we are moving 14.1, the minutes of the audit and risk management committee meeting held on 25th of October. 14.2, which is the material recovery facility, the RDT engineering, deed of agreement budget variation. And 14.3, which is the funding application for the MRF confidential.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Tully. A second there.
Cretin.
Thank you, councillor Streton.
Through the chair.
That's what I'm doing. All those in favour? And that's carried.
Yes.
Thank you. We're now in 11:08 and we are now back in open meeting. Okay, so. Okay, so we'll, we'll now go into item 14.1, which is the minutes of the audit and risk management committee meeting held on 25th of October 2022. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. That council receives and accepts the unconfirmed audit and risk management committee meeting minutes dated the 20th of October 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Can I get a second there for that motion?
Cretin.
Thank you, councillor Streton. Sorry. And all those in favour? Councillor Cochrane?
Yes.
Are you in favour? Yep. And that's carried. That takes us now into 14.2, which is the material recovery facility, the MRF, the RDT engineering proprietary limited, deed of agreement budget variation. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
May I move that? Council approves the variation of the budget of RDT engineering PTY LTD for the extension of time claimed of $91,810.
Can I get a second there for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you, councillor Barwick. All those in favour? Councillor?
Yes.
All right, and that's carried. That takes us to the last. That takes us to the last item, it's 14.3, which is funding application for the MRF. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, recommendation there, as council approves the submission of application for funding for the material recovery facility capital cost required in order to develop delivery of the project.
Can I get a second there for that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, all those in favour?
Yes.
Councillor Cooglan? Would you like your vote recorded? Thank you. Okay, well, the time is 11:10 AM. I now declare this ordinary meeting closed and I'd like to thank everybody here today for your attendance and participation.